Good evening. The October 12th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. City Manager Raul McPhee is on a well-earned family vacation. Assistant City Manager Marion Haganbueker is unable to be with us tonight, but we shall persevere. Tonight, we have a special privilege. Our prayer and pledge will be led by Municipal Judge Terry Jackson. Although we appointed Judge Jackson back in March, he officially began his tenure on the bench this month. Terry has served the community for more than four decades, first as a police officer and then as assistant city attorney and the city prosecutor. But if you know Terry, you know that one thing, that only things that he values more than anything in serving our community is his faith. So I thought it was fitting that he begin his time as municipal court judge by leaving our prayer and pledge tonight. After the prayer and pledge, I would like you to turn your attention to the screen. We will show a short video from the ceremony where Judge Jackson took the oath of office on Friday, September 29th. Judge Jackson, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you would, please bow your heads with me in prayer. Father God, we come to you tonight in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, and we pray blessings upon this community and upon this city council. We're grateful for the men and the women of this council who are more than our leaders, but are also our friends. We see our own state and federal government in chaos. It makes us more grateful and thankful than ever before, and we have a city council that routinely displays wisdom and knowledge that makes this community safe and prosperous. Please guide them in all their deliberations, and although we seldom say it, let them know in their hearts that we appreciate their service and their commitment to you. Father, it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, this is quite an honor for me. If you'll put your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Terry Jackson.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of municipal court judge.
Of municipal court judge.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Terry, and thank you again. You know, we would be remiss if we didn't thank our former judge, Judge Larry Merriman, for his years of service to the community. Judge Merriman was our first full-time municipal judge and has set the bar high for those who will follow in his footsteps. Judge Jackson, you have already played such an important role in our community, and I know you'll continue to do so in your new role, so congratulations. If you wouldn't mind, would you please come forward and let's get a picture with you and the council up front, if you don't mind? Come on, council, everyone up front. Come on up, Terry. It's a count, one to six. Do have a couple of presentations tonight. Proclamation designated October 8th to the 14th as Fire Prevention Week, City of Longview. Let me read that real quickly. Or real slowly. Fire Prevention Week, October 8th to the 14th, 2023. Whereas the Longview Fire Department has requested that by the mayor, by proclamation, recognize October 8th to the 14th as Fire Prevention Week, City of Longview. Our city's first responders have reduced fire-related occurrences through prevention and protection education, and this year's theme is cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. Remember to stay in the kitchen, set a timer, clear around the area, keep a lid ready, and avoid distractions. And so therefore, I, Andy Mack, by authority vested me as Mayor of City of Longview, do proclaim October 8th to the 14th as Fire Prevention Week in Longview, Texas. Chief Stillman, Chief Green, Chief May, Sparky, everybody come on up.
Sparky.
Sparky.
Sparky's here.
Well, you know, fire prevention is such a serious thing that we don't often think about it until the consequences of already created catastrophe. So it's great that we take time to recognize Fire Prevention Week and for all that you guys do, and I love the theme. Cooking safety starts with you, pay attention to the fire prevention, set a timer, stand attention. My house has no chance of burning down, not a one. No one is cooking in my house. None, zero. Let me reiterate, zero chance of burning down. But it is so important that we all pay attention to what we're doing because we get distracted. In this day and age, we had these things called cell phones and computers and iPads, and they distract us, and we've lose thought of what we're doing. And so this is a great reminder of what we need to be doing and to pay attention to make our houses safe, for our kids and for those around us. So thank you, guys, for what you do. Thanks, Sparky. And I know that's a hot suit, but this makes a difference. People recognize this, and they understand it, and the kids understand it, and it makes a difference. So, you know, you can't start too young or too old. So thanks for all you guys do. Y'all are rocking. Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Give up your good work, gang. Thank y'all. Recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Women's Center of East Texas has recognized, the mayor by proclamation recognized October 12th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Longview, the crime of domestic violence violates individuals' privacy, dignity, security, and humanity. Women's Center of East Texas is focused on ending violence, providing safe haven, Christ intervention, and comprehensive support services to victims. And so now therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested me as Mayor of City of Longview, proclaim October 12th, 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in Longview. Ms. Holly Bruce, CEO of Women's Center, come on up. And we have Stella. Stella, what's your last name?
Cabrera.
Stella Cabrera, an advocate with Women's Center. Hey, thank you both so much. You know, we do this every year, but every year it becomes more and more important that we do it every year because we are making steps, we are making progress, but you can never stop short in this. This is something that can affect so many people in so many ways, and until it affects you or someone close to you, you don't understand what the consequences are. So thank you all for your presence, for what you do for those people, not just women, women, children, men, everyone can be involved in this. So thanks for your persistence in what you do, and please keep the good work up because we so definitely need you, and so do those people that are so in need of your services. Thank you all. Y'all are awesome. The bomb. Great job. Keep up the good work. Okay, we are now to citizen comment. Do have one card. Brenda Woolridge.
My name is Brenda Woolridge. My address is 2217 South 13th Street. And we have something in my church called a praise report. Well, tonight, that's something that I want to do to our police department, Mr. Boone, and all that's connected with that department. I had a few complaints not a while ago, but everything is good, and we have a good relationship, and I am so proud of our police department, and I want you to know that. The second one is the fire department. I had an issue with the fire alarm in my house, and I didn't have a fire alarm deal. And I went to the fire department and told them about it, and this gentleman sent his people to my house and installed it for me, and I am so grateful for that. So I just want y'all to know, I didn't know tonight was a fire deal, but I want y'all to know that I'm proud of my city and the people that it represents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda. We are too, Ms. Brenda. I said all the time, we have the best public safety in all of the state of Texas. So thank you both chiefs for what you do and for your departments to follow your lead. Y'all are awesome. We are now to public safety update. We'll start with you, Chief Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, cover some stats with you. So September last month, our priority one calls for service, we had a response time at three minutes and 35 seconds. Again, our benchmark is staying sub-five, so I'm very pleased with those times. Our calls for service last month were at 5,501, and our traffic stops were at almost 2,800, and we filed 38 DWI cases, and we had 214 crashes during September. Want to cover a little bit about National Night Out. Of course, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes pleasing community partnerships, and this past year, or past last week, and the buildup throughout the year has just really been awesome. We ended up with 80 parties in the city limits. We're very pleased with that. The turnout was great for the neighborhoods. I mean, every party I went to, there were, you can see from the pictures, quite a few folks there. Appreciate the school districts, our businesses, businesses that had them during the day, our school districts that helped host larger parties at some of our schools and other locations, and it was just a great time. And everywhere I went, I saw a lot of officers, a lot of firefighters, and they were not just hanging out with each other, but actually visiting with their community members and so forth. So just a great time, great turnout. Love to be able to take the armored vehicle to a couple of different parties, let the kids crawl through it and check it out. You can never start recruiting at just too young of an age, so we'll get them as young as we can. And again, just want to thank the community for all the support for National Night Out and for everything else throughout the year. Also want to move on and cover some tenure awards. So we had our tenure breakfast this past week, and there from the left, we had Lily Crafton, she's with our dispatch. So she dispatches for police and fire with five years. Michael Binham, he's assigned to our traffic unit with five years of service. Deborah Raven with 35 years of service in dispatch, very proud of her. Brandon Thornton, our PIO with 20 years of service, and then Missy Ryan also with 20 years of service, and Not Picture with Sheridan Johnson with our dispatch department with 10 years. Also want to thank Longview Community Ministries for inviting us back out this past Saturday at the mall to participate with their touch of truck. We're out there, we were doing some recruiting there as well, had the armored vehicle and police car, police cart, and some other equipment out there for the kids to check out and adults. So again, thank you to Longview Community Ministries for that. And while this is a little bit older, I didn't get to cover it before, so I just wanted to say thank you to Boss Crane. Back on September 11th, they had food and entertainment and everything else for police and fire, and it was a great time, and we definitely appreciate them doing all that for us. Also, dispatch, you know, talking about dispatchers and seeing some tenured employees, especially with 35 years of service, you know, being on the front lines for being a police officer or firefighter may not be for everybody, but there are still ways that you can serve. And a dispatcher, that is the first person that somebody talks to when they need help. They do it all. They do things that sometimes police officers won't even do. They've helped deliver babies over the phone, they've helped with CPR, and they are the first line when you're calling back to needing help or anything else as a firefighter or a police officer, and it's just a very important job, and I would encourage anybody that's wanting to help and do more, and they want an actual true career, to look at dispatch. And of course, our police officers, we're always ready for some men and women that want to take on the badge and come out and do the right thing for the right reasons. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Chief Boone? Chief Boone, I just want to say, I have been out of town a little bit in the last few months, and I have had the chance to discuss our public safety with some other cities, one in Montana, one in Colorado, and they were astounded that we had an under-five-minute response time. And I said, really? It's usually under four minutes. And they really, neither one could really comprehend that we could actually do that. And I said, that's pretty much our average. And so, you know, what we do here, we do take for granted, but we shouldn't take for granted because it's not that way everywhere. So thank you, guys, for your awesome responses and all that you do. Thanks for all so much.
Thank you.
Chief Boone, I mean, Chief Stillman.
That's okay.
Y'all look so much alike.
Still, we lost that golf game, so I kind of deserved it. Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on some items in the fire department since our last meeting. First, I want to back up to the month of September. We saw two of our more tenured firefighters retire from the department. Firefighter David Holly retired with 20 years of service. Firefighter Engineer Scott Smith retired with 26 years of service. So we certainly want to thank both of these gentlemen for their 46 years of combined service to the Longview Fire Department. We wish them well in their future endeavors, and they did us a great job. We're lucky to have had them for the time that we did. We held a pretty big promotional ceremony back in late September. This was one of our largest promotional appointment classes that I could think of in recent years. I'm going to run down this list real quick, so bear with me. Those promoting were two fire driver engineer, Taylor Simmons, another fire driver engineer, Colin Moore, another fire driver engineer, Walter Blackburn, another fire driver engineer, David Corn, our training section chief is now Travis Pickle. We promoted Kelsey Trotty to the rank of captain, Logan Leckins to the rank of lieutenant. Andy Parker was promoted as one of the assistant chiefs. Fire driver engineer Jason Frye, fire driver engineer Hunter King, firefighter engineer Josh Meenick, EMS operations officer J.T. Terry, fire driver engineer Brad Brown, battalion chief Tommy Daniels, and fire driver engineer Lance Woodruff. Makes me wonder who's been driving our apparatus here with all those fire driver engineer openings that we had. But we look forward to what these men are going to do to make our department better. Each one of them, I thank them for being willing to step up and take on a higher degree of responsibility in our fire department and look forward to their next promotional opportunity. National Night Out, Chief Boone hit it. I'll kind of revisit that. It was great. We had a wonderful time. I didn't get just a ton of pictures, but I made my rounds around town as I usually do. I saw our crews interacting with all the good people of Longview, enjoying some good food. I got to catch up with an old friend, Mr. Charles Taylor, at one of the parties down on Nixon Street, so appreciated getting to spend an hour or so visiting with him. And I always set my goal pretty high to make a certain number of parties, and I never hit it, because once I get out there and get to talking and visiting, the time just flies by. But we certainly had a great time. There's our Station 3 Seashift crew over on La Terna Drive at a party. I know those guys, their bellies were full when they left that party. They got fed good and treated good, and we just want to tell Longview how lucky we are to work in such a great city that has such awesome support for public safety, and thanks for showing that with things like National Night Out. We also participated in this week's, earlier this week's tenure breakfast. Those in our department that hit a certain tenure milestone, they're from left to right, fire driver engineer Brandon Reese, fire driver engineer Shane Whittington with five years, Brandon had 20, EMS operations officer J.T. Terry with five, Captain Kobe Beckham hit 25, he was the big winner, Captain Brian Vickery with 20 years, and then not able to make this event were fire driver engineer Andy Chapman with 10 years, and fire driver engineer Zach Portero with 10 years. So again, congratulations to each one of these men on hitting that career milestone. Our EMS subscription program application period is now open. This is that thing that we offer where you can sign your household up for $70 for a year and defer any type of out-of-pocket charges that you might incur from that ambulance trip to the hospital. So we certainly encourage our citizens to take advantage of this opportunity. You can get more information there at longviewtexas.gov/ASP. And like the police department, we are also hiring. You saw my first slide, we lost two people. We need good people to replace good people. So if anybody's interested in a job at the Longview Fire Department, longviewtexas.gov/lfdjobs. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir. Y'all keep up the great work. We now have a consent agenda, any items council that pulled off for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now to zoning. Have a public hearing, consider application S23-10. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack and members of council. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning district. A SUP is required for a restaurant allowing onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, there is a grocery store and convenience store north of this property that does sell alcohol. Staff finds that the request is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed, so we have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held, consider application filed by Eugene McQuarter to abandon a portion of 40-foot wide street right of way known as Bronner Street, consisting of approximately 114 acres. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to abandon a 40-foot street right of way known as Bronner Street. It is an unimproved street that has been paved over the years. The applicant would like to incorporate this street into their lots. All public utilities along with city staff have reviewed and signed off on the proposed abandonment. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed, is there a motion?
Micro motion.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Ash Adams, consider resolution awarding contract in amount of 1.4 million for necessary documents for True Roads construction, construction of Longview Public Safety Training Center project. Mr. Archer.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Tonight, I bring for city council consideration a resolution awarding a contract in amount of 1,401,167 to True Roads Construction. This is going to be to complete Phase 1 of the public safety training facility. This image here is of the master plan for that training facility. The blue parts are not considered as part of this contract award, they'll be part of the next phase, part of the planning phase for that one. The master plan included that administrative training building, gun range, shoot house, residential and retail training buildings, confined space, trench rescue, and driving course. This layout shows what we're considering as part of this construction contract. This is going to be an entrance road, site pavement, water and sewer, and then some drainage improvement. The tower has been, was put, has been built and is in place, and it was done back in May. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Archer, on this? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Archer. Without eyes of community interest, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what order they're coming up in, but here we go. So Pine Tree's got open house, we've got a food drive going from 10th through the 25th. The campus that collects the most food will be awarded the trophy by the health science students. The Pine Tree Fall Festival, October 28th at Pine Tree Stadium, 3 to 6. Tickets to a quarter can be purchased at the gate. Hot dogs, costume parade, Got Talent competition, and games. Theater production at Stud Ducks and Horny Toads by H. Russ Brown will be premiering on Thursday, November 9th, 6:30. Following performances in November 11th and 12th and the 13th. National Night Out, we've talked about a little bit, we hosted a joint party at Grecton with the Pine Tree Independent School District. We had a blast. The slide on the left, you will see that we have, our Boy Scout troop has these sleds, and we took some SWAT officers and one other police officer, and they figured out after about five minutes just how hard that was to do. And by the time they were going, it was good. And I'm also proud to report that we finally found something that the fire department can beat the police department at, and that is throwing bags.
They wanted donuts, too, just so you know.
So we had a great time, great turnout, we had just a great community event, and I was so proud of our police and fire, and those people really enjoy seeing those and meeting, shaking their hands, and all of you that came out, including animal control, it was just a great, great, great evening. Longview, pause, Sunday, October 22nd, I believe will be the date from 9 to 1. They've got a free clinic going on at the fairgrounds, and I believe that's a really good thing that they're doing, and medical exams and shots and things for animals, and that's the Sunday before we will have the big contest, which we'll talk about at the next meeting. So that's got that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. I don't think enough can be said about National Night Out. I mean, I think it's getting bigger and better every year, so I just want to say a big thank you to all of those who host it, National Night Out events. The food that is being served is no longer hot dogs. I mean, it's four-course meals. So guys, if you're not getting out to National Night Out, and Chief, I did see a lot of policemen on Nixon, just wanted to let you know because the food there was phenomenal. So again, thank you to all of those who hosted National Night Out. Thank you.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I also would like to acknowledge National Night Out. It was a phenomenal time, and Ms. Snoddy just mentioned Nixon, which is in District 3, had some of the best food. But absolutely, I want to thank everyone for that. It was a great, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Woolridge, I'm sorry, ma'am. I came to yours as well, and the food and the setup there was just as well. Yes, absolutely, Ms. Woolridge. Yes, ma'am. That was a great one as well. All of them were really good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You better stop while you can, right? Yeah. He had a lot more to say, but that ended real quick. Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. We appreciate you so much. Yeah, we do. Mr. News Ted.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Also, again, echoing the same thing about National Night Out, so this was the only photo we got, and thankful for Chief Boone to coordinate this photo. We were here at Tillwood, and at this location, you actually had Chief Stillman showed up right after the photo, and had me there as well as with Chief Boone, and so it was a great party there. I was able to make four of them, and I'll echo the food sentiment. I tried them all at every single spot. Some had smoked hamburgers, this one had Juicy's tacos, and the other one had chili dogs. So definitely had enough there, and you can see my kids are enjoying the food as well there. So appreciate y'all doing everything you do to coordinate this, and everybody that was part of that. It was just, it's a magical time, and it's great to get the neighbors together and to promote safety, so thank you.
Oh, you did?
No, I got four. I'm going to pull again. I'm going to count someone again.
You're running a contest here.
We are. I want to remind y'all about my upcoming town hall meeting on October 19th at 5:30. It's going to be at the Events Center on Alpine, which is the East Texas Builders Association, and so that'll be my first one there, so if you want to do any hazing or anything, definitely stop by. I'm sure Ray will take a time for the mic.
Yeah, he will. It's a big event center.
I need y'all to help me fill it out, or it's going to be, it's going to seem very hard.
First one, you fucking big event center.
I did. Awesome.
You guys did that in a classroom.
And then the next one is we got the Walk Ten Alzheimer's coming up this Saturday. The ceremony begins at 9:00 a.m., and the walk is at 9:30. It'll be from the Gregg County Courthouse. This is several years that we've done this as well, and it's just a great event, it's a terrible disease, and just something that if y'all can come out to a terrible disease, and just something that if y'all can come out to walk and show your support. I am happy to say the City of Longview has put together a team, and they've, they're showing up for it, so we appreciate the City of Longview as well for that. And then for the last one, we have the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. They have their Halloween Trick-or-Treat Carnival. It's gonna be a pet costume parade, a lot of stuff on Saturday, October 28th at 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, so definitely be a good family fun event, so definitely stop by there and support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gambo.
Well, first, good evening, everyone, and although I was very thankful to represent you every day, and I was able to make it to almost every National Night Out party, but two, I have chosen to speak about all that and other things at the next council meeting. So today, I've been working pretty closely with the General Counsel of Israel to deliver this message to our citizens about what's going on worldwide that does affect us locally. So fellow Texans and neighbors, I, Councilwoman Michelle Gambo, District Five in Longview, Texas, denounce all acts of terrorism and stand with the sovereign nation of Israel. Over the last few days, we have all seen the news of the heinous attacks on Israel. This is not a territorial dispute, this is a deliberate attack on the Jewish people by the terrorist group Hamas. It is up to humanity to be as informed as possible when it comes to these matters. It's also up to us to stand up for what is right. We must never be silent during these times. It is our duty to call out injustice, especially when you hold an elected office. The death toll in Israel from the Hamas assault has risen to over 700 people. This is the largest amount of Jewish people killed because they are Jewish in one single day since the end of the Holocaust. May the memories of the victims forever be honored and remembered. According to the World Jewish Congress, it's been several days since Israel has entered a state of war to the devastating Hamas onslaught of Saturday. You can find more of this information on my official press release that I will have on my council page, but for any further questions, please defer to the General Counsel of Israel's to the Southwest Office located in Houston, Umberto Cruz, at press@houston.mfa.gov-il, and please cc academic@houston.mfa.gov-il for any questions pertaining to this global issue. Thank you.
Mr. Pertle.
Nothing for me. Well, Downtown Survey, Longview Main Street needs your help to determine the current identity as well as the desire of future identity of our downtown. Complete the four-question survey at longviewtexas.gov/downtownsurvey. This does make a difference in how we shape our thoughts towards the future of downtown, so take just a few minutes and complete that survey and give us some input, so we have some direction. McQuarter Park Public Meeting, and the Sabine River Public Meeting, we need your input. Two concurrent meetings will be held at the MOCOP Convention Center at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, October 17th to discuss the Sabine River paddling trail and updates to McQuarter Park funded by the 2018 bond. These, once again, are also very important to have input from our citizens because this, these are your projects and your, your opportunities to speak up and tell us what you want to see. The Walk of Honor Exhibit, we had a great turnout this past month for our Walk of Honor celebration. Congratulations again to those honorees. The Walk of Honor Exhibit at the Gregg County Historical Museum will remain open through Saturday, October the 28th, so go out and take a look at that. It's pretty, it's pretty impressive. The Permit Portal, Development Services has launched a new portal to help streamline the process to submit and manage building permits. Through the portal, customers can apply and pay for construction permits, request an inspection, keep track of review status, and register as a contractor online without having to physically come in to the city buildings. To access the portal, please visit longviewtexas.gov-portalpermit. And that's a great adjunct to help our development services and help the people try and do those developments. So thank you for your innovative work on that, Michael, and all you, all of you who are involved in that. And just want to reiterate what council has all said and all of us, National Night Out is such an important thing, and it is such a great way for our citizens to communicate with our public safety officers.